Good evening, folks, and welcome to tonight's special meeting of the Geneva City Council. The time is 7:00 o'clock. This meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our deputy clerk to please take the roll call.
Mike Bruno?
Here.
Chair Burkhardt?
Here.
Becky Ruby?
Ruby, here.
Gabriel Caven?
Here.
Dean Kilburg?
Here.
Brad Kosarag?
Here.
Craig Maladra?
Here.
Richard Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Robert Swanson?
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, tonight we begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. We would like to invite Paula Schmidt to lead us in the pledge. Did that surprise you?
[laughing] Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Paula. David DeGroot and I were kibitzing prior to the meeting, and he said, "Boy, I didn't think I'd make it on time." And I said the same to him. I just came from my granddaughter's seventh birthday party. Today is her birthday, so I wish my granddaughter, Micah, a happy seventh birthday, and she was excited to see me leave. So we have a crisp agenda this evening, folks. Item 2A, consider approval of special event application from the Geneva Chamber of Commerce for Festival of the Vine, September 9 through 11, 2022, including use of city right-of-way and city services.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bruno, seconded by Mr. Swanson. Ms. Dawkins.
Okay. So the Geneva Chamber of Commerce Annual Festival of the Vine is planned for September 9 through 12, and for several months, the city and the chamber have been working together to relocate the festival to a new location to better accommodate event amenities, utilities, and guests. The new location will be on James Street, west of South Third, and a detailed relocation map is included with the application that was in your packet this evening. The Festival of the Vine requires significant city services, including but not limited to street closures, traffic control, onsite public safety personnel, utility personnel and services, trash collection, and event promotion. All departments have been involved in the relocation plan and have reviewed the application and recommend approval this evening. And we do have representatives from the chamber with us tonight if you have any additional questions or want to hear anything about the festival.
Let me begin by acknowledging and thanking the President, Paula Schmidt, and the Chairman, Mr. Lieben, for having to delay this from last week. So thank you very much. Is there anything you want to add, or are there any questions from the dais for either Paula or Scott, or from Ms. Ruby, who's joining us remotely? Mr. Bruno?
I'd just like to invite representative from the chamber to kind of go over what's new and what we can expect.
I'd love to do that. Thank you for asking. As Stephanie said, we are moving the event to James Street between a little bit, not close to Third, but before the judge's lot, and then we kind of zag a little bit on Fourth Street, come back on up to Fifth Street. So it's a much larger area than it was on North Fourth, so I think it'll be a little safer. There's not as many curbs and things like that because we had a lot of people falling. The biggest thing, though, is the crossing of State Street, so we won't have to do that anymore.
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Sorry about that.
Okay. Hello? So I think we're really excited about that because we're in a spot that's larger, safer for our guests, so we're excited about that. Couple of things that we are going to change is we are, since this is kind of a first year where things are a little stressful in society, I guess I should say, we are going to recommend that people do not bring backpacks or large totes in. At this point, we don't really have the amount of volunteers to be able to look through people's items. We will have a security guard at the front as well to kind of deter people a little bit, so we're trying to make a few changes as far as security is concerned. We still will have a lot of security people that we have as volunteers, but we'll also have the police officers with us as well, and they'll be one that will not have to stand there and watch traffic come past on State Street, so we're excited about that. I think we'll have a lot of good eyes. We'll have, everything will be fenced in. We are, the music goes until 10:00. Ticket sales stop at 9:30, and again, we require wristbands for the event. So safety, our wine distributor would like to add a new drink called Austin Cocktails. It's a low alcohol item. We had Jeanne Fornari check into that to make sure that it was okay under our liquor license, which it is, so it's just something to bring a little younger crowd possibly to the event. Trying something new. We try something new each year. We tried beer, having some beer there last year, which was very, very positive, so we're just trying a few things here and there. Don't know whether it will be next year again, but we're trying it this year if approved. So any other questions?
Anything else for Paula?
The usual complement of restaurants attending?
Yes, we have, this year we've got, I think it's 16 are coming. A few of them are not, just some of the bigger ones, you know, like a Gen Ho, which we are totally going to miss, but we understand that there's a lot going on there that can't. And again, there's a lot that are short-staffed and don't feel comfortable coming, but we have 15 or 16, I believe.
Thanks.
Anyone else from the dais? Anything from Alderwoman Ruby, from the friendly confines of her home? Okay. We have a motion by Bruno, a second by Swanson. I will kindly ask Ms. Fornari to please take the roll call.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With nine votes in the affirmative, zero votes in the negative, and one absent, item 2A has been approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 2B, which is, of course, related, is to consider approval of the special event liquor licenses for the Festival of the Vine, September 9 through 11, 2022. Is there a motion?
Seconded.
Mr. Kosarag makes the motion, and Mr. Caven makes the second. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so as stated, these are special liquor licenses for Festival of the Vine for the Little Traveler, the Royal Wren, and Penrose Brewing, and the Geneva Chamber of Commerce. And again, they've all been received, reviewed, and recommended for approval.
Questions or comments from the dais, or from Alderwoman Ruby? Hearing none? Sensing none? Roll call vote is in order. Ms. Fornari, whenever you're ready.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With nine votes in the affirmative, zero votes in the negative, and one absent, the liquor licenses have been approved. That would have been a disaster if not. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, everyone. I hope to see you all there.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Item 2C, ladies and gentlemen, consider approval of resolution number 2022-77, granting a final plat of subdivision approval for the Fox Valley Commerce Center and final planned unit development approval for Phase 1 of the Fox Valley Commerce Center, brought to you by our friends at H.I.P. Six Enterprises, LLC, care of Hillwood. Is there a motion? Mr. Marx makes the motion.
Seconded.
Ooh, seconded by Kosarag. Is that what you thought, too? Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so the applicant is seeking to subdivide the land into a total of four lots and develop the site with three to four light industrial buildings. The Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council approved initial entitlements for the property, including annexation, rezoning, and preliminary planned unit development subdivision in April of 2022. The applicant is now seeking to finalize the first phase of development for the project through their request for final plat of subdivision approval and final planned unit development approval. The first phase includes improving the 75.23 acre site to support the entire development and constructing two buildings on lots 1 and 2 respectively. Site work will be completed in preparation for the future development of Lot 3, but no finalized proposal is being considered for the lot at this time. The project site would be accessed via an existing portion of Geneva Drive, which extends westward from Calts Road and terminates at the southwest corner of the subject property. The proposed project will not require the westward extension of Geneva Drive beyond its current terminus at the southwest corner of the project site. Additional details regarding features of the proposed development within this stage are elaborated within the attached Community Development Department report, which was posted on the website, and all of the Planning Commission information is there as well. At the August 11 meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the applicant's request, subject to final engineering approval by city staff. With us this evening, we do have representatives for the applicant and also Director DeGroot, who can answer any additional questions.
Thank you, Stephanie. With that, I'll defer to the applicants. Anything you gentlemen would like to add that we don't already know?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff. Just simply wanted to say thank you, all of you, for the support. The Webers are thrilled. Mrs. Weber, who I think just turned 106, is thrilled that we're able to get the property closed. We're very eager to be a part of the community. We had our lender in town last week. They stayed at the Harrington. We had dinner at Foxheart. We just had a wonderful night in town. So we're incredibly proud and really excited to be part of the Geneva community, and I'm happy to take any other questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for our friend, Don? Alderwoman Ruby, anything from you? Mr. Kosarag?
Forgive me for, this is probably a little minor, given the overall development, but what are the plans for sidewalk along Calts Road? Is there one? And is there a good, safe passage? I know bicycling and, you know, allowing free access for pedestrians and things like that is going to become even more of an issue for us, so I just really wanted to make sure we were addressing that upfront.
We had been in receipt of plans from Trans Systems, the engineer that was hired by Geneva for the road widening, in which that was a bike path as part of the easement. Our portion of the project dedicates about a 53-foot easement along Calts Road for that widening and for that bike path, which would be a part of that project.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Kilburg?
Glad to have you back. Could you provide maybe somewhat of a timeline as far as the construction plans and theoretical occupancy of those facilities?
Certainly, Alderman. Our hope is to, we've begun to mobilize on the site. We've cleared some of the site vegetation already. Our hope is to begin to do some site work on the site after the final site plan approval and approvals here tonight. We hope to have foundations in by later in the year, walls going up early in 2023, and be able to deliver the first two buildings early to, let's call it, mid-2023 July 1st or so.
So as far as leasing these facilities, are there tentative tenants already that you've identified?
We're in negotiations with two particular tenants at this point for portions of the building.
Okay. With potentially occupancy by, did you say the end of 2023?
Ideally, we could deliver the building in mid-2023.
Okay. Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? We have a motion by Marx. We have a second by Kosarag. If there are no other questions, I'll invite our esteemed colleague, Ms. Fornari, to please take the roll call.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, item 12, excuse me, 2C has been approved.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you for all your help.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Item 2D, approve ordinance number 2022-37, approving furnishing municipal water services and sanitary sewer services to a residential property outside of the corporate limits of the city of Geneva without requiring annexation. This property is located at 2133 Heather Road. Is there a motion to put this on the floor?
So moved.
What do you think?
It's rare that I ask.
Dealer's choice.
Dealer's choice. God help us. Who said, who made the motion? Was it Swanson? Okay, we'll give it to Swanson. And is it Maladra? Swanson makes the motion. Maladra makes the second. Ms. Dawkins has the floor.
Okay, as unanimously recommended at last week's committee of the whole meeting, Catherine Walter has requested to connect to the city of Geneva's municipal water service and sanitary sewer service to her property at 2133 Heather Road. That's about it. You all talked about it last week, but Director DeGroot is here if there are any additional questions.
Director DeGroot is ensconced close to the exit. Any questions for the director? I know, I know. It's like, if none, roll call vote. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
And Swanson?
Aye.
With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, item 2D has been approved. We're at the item number three, folks, public comment. Anyone joining us this evening here? Welcome.
Good evening. Okay, Jeanne McGowan.
Good evening.
Okay, I wanted to come and speak to you all this evening in regard to the mosquito spraying, and I know that the current contract with Clark was recently renewed, I believe up to two years, and I received a notice from the city the day of the last citywide, it was an adulticide spraying, I believe it was at the end of June, and I've been working on creating a pollinator garden in my yard, not in the parkway, but in my, you know, private property. And it just occurred to me that I'm spending all this time and money and effort to help the pollinators, and I really didn't want the adulticide spraying to kill off much of maybe what was living there. So I contacted Clark through, it was the day of the scheduled spraying. I contacted Clark through their website, just the basic, like, oh, customer service, you have any questions, you know, please send a message, not expecting that I'd hear from anyone anytime soon, but I thought, well, hey, at least I'll get this going. I wanted to know if I could opt out of the spraying. And some time went by that afternoon, and I happened to check my phone, and here I had several calls I'd missed, and I checked my email, and I was really impressed by the outstanding customer service that I received from the representative at Clark, who really went above and beyond, went completely out of her way, stayed after work when she could have gone home, just to try to get in touch with me, to find out what my address was and to confirm with me, and she said, yes, we do have a permanent opt-out list for any one of our customers who wishes to opt out of the mosquito spraying, and once your address is on there, it's permanent. The sprayers, when they go past your property, they'll turn off, you know, the pickup truck, it'll turn off the sprayer. So I spoke with her, and again, I really commend Clark Environmental for having this option. I think it's really wonderful. So my address is now on that permanent opt-out list, and I didn't see anything about this on the city of Geneva website, but I just think that in the spirit of transparency and open communication, which I've heard so much about through the, you know, Geneva city government over the years, that this is a really nice option for residents that should be shared. So I would just like, it's a simple request that I have, that the option for residents to opt out of the spraying be, like, publicly acknowledged, and a very simple Google search, this is a very common thing for other municipalities to have in the Midwest, you know, across the country, but, you know, places in Michigan, and, you know, just random places, they have it clearly stated on their city websites that the option to opt out is there. It's very cut and dry, just, you know, enter your name, address, and you're on that list to opt out. So I wanted to see if that's something that the city council could possibly address and make that option, which exists, but it's just not being publicized. And I think that a lot of Geneva residents would welcome that information and that option. So.
Thank you.
Does anyone have a question or comment or anything else I can?
Yeah, I appreciate you coming tonight. In your conversation with them, and again, this would be educational to me as well, did they explain the potential risk to pollinators at all, or is their spraying really very targeted to specifically the mosquito and the fact that if it impets a hatch of those mosquitoes? Did, I mean, I would think that they would try to give you some type of an explanation that it doesn't affect bees and other pollinators that we normally have in our environment, but...
There's definitely a lot of information on that, but what I'd like to, what I'm asking...
I would be interested in what their explanation might have been. Did they try to explain something?
No.
Along those lines?
I mean, I'd be happy to forward, I know back in, I think, July 1st, I forwarded the email to a few people, I think my alderman from the 4th Ward, and then Mayor Burns, I think maybe Ms. Dawkins as well, but I can send it to all of you. The email was very much that I received, hang on one second, and it just reads as follows. This is from the customer service rep, Shannon, June 30th. Good afternoon. I have tried calling but haven't heard back. We would love to honor your wish to become a shut-off location for our spray services tonight. Can you please let me know your address so I can be sure to get you added to our list before retreat this evening? Thank you, Shannon, from Clark. And then a short time later, after I spoke with her, I received a confirmation email, shut off assigned. Good afternoon. Your address has officially been listed as a shut-off. You will not be sprayed. Happy 4th of July weekend. Thank you, Shannon. So it's very simple. There was no, you know...
Okay, there was no defense or explanation of the spray and the fact that it wasn't hazardous?
Yeah, I mean, I explained that, my reasoning was because I have a pollinator garden that's exposed to the street, and I didn't want it affected by the adulticide spray. And that was pretty much it. I mean, it was like they went over, what's the word, above and beyond to contact me to let me know, yes, we absolutely have an opt-out list, and you can be on it tonight, this afternoon. So I just thought it was so great, and I think it's something that other Geneva residents would benefit from as well. And if I may ask, is this something that the council would consider?
Ms. Dawkins wants to comment on...
Well, just on Dean's question, if you may recall, back on July 8th, Rich did send out to all of the aldermen the notice from Clark that talked about what they spray, how little it is, that they do it at night because that's when the other pollinators are not active, and that it is not, significant research has shown that it doesn't affect the beneficial insects, so you do have that information in your email on July 8th. The one comment we do have is, it is a program that we don't advertise because it does erode the benefits. If we have everybody starting to opt out, then the whole reason that we are spraying, which, as you recall, we only spray when there's a positive West Nile test in the traps that they catch, that's when we spray. So it's not a nuisance spraying, it's really for the protection of public health.
And that's where I was sort of going with it. It would be, it'd be detrimental if all of a sudden we had 150 people, all of a sudden decided that they wanted to, they felt as though the bees were all at risk, which, and again, I'm not a scientist, but, you know, the explanation from Clark is such that obviously there's research behind this, and that I think that there may be health reasons, there could be a lot of different reasons why you might not want to have your neighborhood sprayed or your residents sprayed. I just don't think that we should assume that, you know, all the bees in Geneva are at risk when we spray.
And it's not bees, I know bees are alive during, or active during the day. Many pollinators are active at night, moths, and mosquitoes are a part of the ecosystem, like bats and other dragonflies rely on mosquitoes for their food source. So I don't really want to get into this. All I'm saying is, in the spirit of open communication, government transparency, the fact that Clark is the one who has that opt-out option, they're willingly saying, yes, absolutely, you can opt out, and I don't, it doesn't sit well with me that this information is being withheld from Geneva residents, and that's where I feel it stands right now.
Well, it's good that you investigated, and you brought forward a lot of information, I think, that'll be helpful to the residents, that if they have concerns, they have that opportunity, and again, I don't see where, you know, I don't feel as though we should conceal anything, and then if, in fact, that option exists, it probably should be communicated. And again, I know that it could create a lot of residents that are very environmentally conscious, which we all should be, that they might opt to take advantage of that, so, and I'm not arguing with you, I'm just telling you that, just so the residents just don't get one perspective on this, and then all of a sudden think that they have an obligation now to call in and say, don't spray our block, you know?
Yeah, and it's completely a choice. Obviously, if people are interested in, you know, they still want their property sprayed, that's how, during these citywide spraying events, that's how it will stay. This is just letting residents know that Clark is giving, there's an option that exists already from Clark, that if you want to, you can opt out, and I really feel that that should be openly communicated, so.
Sounds fair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, anyone else in the dais? Mr. Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. I for one don't really see a problem making mention of that option. I don't think, what I know of psychology, I don't see massive swaths of residents opting out. I think mosquitoes are an annoyance that most people want gone. I'm perfectly fine with a mention on the website. That's it.
Ms. Burkhardt?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to say, Jeanne thinks you're being here tonight, and I miss your environmental slant on a lot of the issues that I'm...
I even wore a dress with flowers on it.
I love it, yeah.
On purpose.
So, yeah, I was going to say, basically, what Mike says is, like, you know, I wouldn't mind a button or something on the website so that people who might not be as good at you as digging through, you know, could kind of easily say, okay, that, you know, if I want to opt out, it is an option, so, but I also see where Dean is, where I'm thinking about the greater good of, like, you know, I'd rather not get West Nile, and like, you know, that's kind of, the coverage is part of the benefit, so, you know.
My only thought is, is that with social media today, all of a sudden, you can communicate a piece, and all of a sudden, people just decide, well, I'm going to join and opt out. I mean, the dynamics today in our society are a lot different than they were 10 or 15 or 20 years ago, so I can see staff's position that you have to be a little bit defensive on some of these things, but I, and maybe the reason is with social media today, that these things take on a life of their own sometimes, and it would be, it could make things very challenging when you're going down the street and you're turning your sprayer on and off multiple times. And again, probably, I agree, that may not happen, but there's, in staff's defense, there's a little reasoning and rationale behind what they've done as far as maybe not making this overly public, but you brought it forward and...
And I'm very glad ultimately that you got such great service from a city contractor who we do regular business with, so that's good to hear, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Ruby?
Thank you. Jeanne, I just wanted to say thanks for speaking. I appreciate you coming out, and I love what you had to say, and I think maybe if we could kind of balance on our website the information from Clark about what the spraying does, along with the option to opt out if you're interested, I think that might address some of the concerns that we've heard tonight. But, yeah, I definitely would support just having this advertised on our website, that this is an option. I think that's a great suggestion, and I thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the dais? Mr. Swanson, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to amplify what Alderwoman Ruby said, and that is, I agree that having the option is important, but also an explanation of why we're doing this in the West Nile and the health reasons we're doing it, and then the information provided by Clark as
to the pollinators perhaps not being significantly impacted, so that people can make an educated decision, so. So, if we had that opt-out, I would prefer it to be balanced with information so that they could decide based on that. Thank you.
And if I may, you have to take the information posted by Clark, as much as, I was happy with the response from Clark, they're in the business to sell a product, and it's going to be, the information you receive from them is, in my opinion, a bit one-sided. There's other scientific studies that say that what they spray is not the safest, and it does kill a lot of beneficial things, so, I mean, I'm happy with the city posting whatever they want, but I just want to publicly state that that's my opinion.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jeanne.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone. Nice to see you all.
Good to see you. Anyone else?
Welcome back. Good evening to the city council members. I have one question, and I just want to find out, you know, as more and more of these warehouses are going up on the east side, and we're okay, you know, we've been okay with that, we were very, very happy to see in the planning and zoning the Bullock project, because it addresses our issues, we're still, you know, we're on guard there on the east side. We want to keep the traffic, any truck traffic from going across right from our subdivision. We'd like to see something other than a warehouse, and this was addressing all that. So, my question to the city council, to the planning and zoning, is what is happening with the Bullock project, and is anybody in the city, what are we doing to foster this and to move it along? That's my question.
I'm going to turn that over to Mr. DeGroot, but first, and I don't want to screw this up, forgive me, remind me of your name again.
David Walensiyak, sorry, I forgot.
No, I knew it, and Walensiyak is just like it sounds, so...
You got it. 578 Lexington Drive.
Absolutely.
Yes.
We have you on file.
I know that, yes. I saw my picture, yes.
Did you see that?[1436.74][1436.74](Laughter). Mr. DeGroot? Good to see you, David.
So, the Bullock campus, they have filed an application. All of the details of that application are on the Development Projects page. Where we're at with it right now is we've completed our first round of review with the city, issued comments to the applicant. They've also received their first round of review comments from Kane County Department of Transportation. I believe that was last week, and we've held a Zoom meeting to kind of go over the review comments, and we're waiting for them to resubmit for another round of review, and hopefully that submitted will be clean enough where we can get it going to the Planning and Zoning Commission and bring it forward to the council.
David, does that satisfy your query?
That is fine, so things are looking positive.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, it just leaves your friend back there. Come on up.
Save the best for last.
Maybe he's not your friend, you didn't sit next to him after you spoke.
Not at all. My name is Mark Sartel, I live at 548 Lexington, and I really appreciate your time here tonight. Although David commented that, you know, we don't have any specific questions at this time about the warehouses, I did want to just make a broader comment tonight about the fact that my wife and I have been residents here in Geneva for 32 years this month. We moved here in August of 89. We raised four sons here, they got great educations that prepared them for the University of Illinois and my alma mater, Wheaton College, and they got great educations there, and we're very grateful to the city of Geneva for providing the environment to raise our sons, for the excellent education that they had, and we've remained residents on the east side of Geneva this entire time. I guess my concern is, over the years, we've heard many times from the city government and in the press that there are plans for improving the eastern gateway to the city and to make improvements to East State, and we're happy to see that the East State project widening and improvement is moving forward, but our concern is more of these warehouses are being proposed and developed, is that the east side gateway is soon becoming a gateway of warehouses and truck terminals and truck repair centers, which, as we've expressed before, are not in keeping with the character and what we see Geneva as, and my concern is that we're just throwing the east side, you know, throwing it out and not recognizing the concerns of the citizens on that side of town, and we voiced that, we were here in force, as you know, a year ago, to oppose the Amazon development, they decided to pull out at that time, but we knew that these warehouses were going to continue to be proposed, so I guess I just wanted to express some disappointment in the way that this has gone and how the east side of Geneva is characterized and how it's viewed by the general public coming to Geneva. We'd like to see more improvements on that side of town, and as the long-range plan for commercial development on Kirk Road continues, we would prefer to see more mixed use of light industrial and smaller businesses along there, and as David indicated, we're very excited about the Bullock campus and the proposed development of that property, which is more in keeping with what we're looking for, so, anyway, we really appreciate your efforts as a city council, but we would like to see more done for the citizens of Geneva and to recognize our voice along with others. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sartel. Anyone online, Ms. Dawkins or Mr. McCready? I don't think so. With that, ladies and gentlemen, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session on the purchase or lease of property for the use of the public body. Is there such a motion? Motion by Mr. Marx.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Bruno. Roll call vote to go into closed session for the purpose described is in order. Ms. Fornari?
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhardt.
Aye.
Ruby.
Ruby, aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Kosarog.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
We're going to flip off the microphones for just a moment. Does Alderwoman Ruby need to transition to a different link?
We're going to call her on the phone.
Oh, we're going to call her on the phone, okay. Just one sec, folks, okay. Is there a motion to return to open session, ladies and gentlemen? Oh, Burkhardt and Swanson get it. A voice, actually, roll call vote. Voice vote sufficient. All in favor of returning to open session, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are back in open session, ladies and gentlemen. Anything for the benefit of the community or the council? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this special city council meeting. Mr. Marx makes the motion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, folks. Thank you very much.